Okay, thank you. Okay, I have in this meeting, this ordinary meeting of council on the 23rd of August 21. I open it by, I would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land we're on here today, who are actually people, pay my respects to their elders, both past, present and emerging. Declaration of webcasting, I inform all those in attendance at this meeting that the meeting is being webcast and those in attendance should refrain from making any defamatory statements concerning any person, councillor or employee and refrain from discussing those matters subject to closed council proceedings as indicated in clause 14.1 of the Code of Meeting Practice. Present, I notice that councillor Lesley and councillor Smith are absent this evening. I know councillor Smith has put in an apology.
I'll move that apology, Mayor.
Happy to second.
Second is councillor Ring.
Yeah.
Those in favour?
Aye.
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 I declare that carried. Our declarations of interest. Our declarations of interest, our confirmation of minutes.
Happy to move, Mayor.
Happy to second.
Councillor McAndrew, seconded councillor Ring. Those in favour?
Aye.
Aye.
Clear that carried. Our commemorations and announcements.
Yes, Mayor Thompson, I have an announcement to make.
Go ahead councillor Statham.
I'd like to thank the council staff for their preparedness in expediting the Covid testing clinic in Lithgow. Staff have been working on this tirelessly since the 22nd of July. So, well done to all involved. I have also the utmost respect for our frontline workers who are working tirelessly again to try and keep our state as safe as possible. The nurses, doctors, clinicians, ambulance, teams, paramedics and many more, including New South Wales Health. New South Wales Health have the responsibility of interviewing and tracing Covid patients, which can take up to six hours per patient for an interview. It's quite an ordeal and the tracing takes more time than one would expect. I believe that New South Wales Health will not divulge information to the public until the facts are confirmed. So, I think we need to be very aware how lucky we are to live where we are and we have been very fortunate up until now. So, congratulations to all the staff that have been working to get this clinic up and running.
Thank you councillor Statham. Any other commemorations?
Yeah, I'll go one.
Yes, Stephen.
So, Matthew Johnson in particular, on behalf of the sub-ranch of the RSL, also Lee Baker at the Harrock Memorial for the very excellent work they did in the repair of the wall memorial on the scenic hill. It was done very quickly and done very professionally. So, I'd like to just acknowledge that.
Thank you councillor Lesley. Public forum, Mr General Manager, we have no. And Meryl Minnetts. Shall we move into general managers' reports, local government near South Wales voting and your conference voting? We have a recommendation on page five. Council determines its voting, councillor delegates to the local government near South Wales Board elections. Three delegates available, annual conference, three delegates available. The three delegates that emerge from the above also be put forward as delegates for the local government near South Wales Special Conference.
I'd like to move the local government New South Wales Board elections and the local government New South Wales Annual Conference in this term of council, that the mayor and deputy mayor be part of that three. And equally for the delegates for the local government New South Wales Special Conference, which will be held next year, the mayor and deputy mayor for that as well. I note for the board elections and the annual conference says three, so I'd be the mayor and deputy mayor of one other for both of those. And I think for the one other, the special conference, I think appropriately should be left to, that'll be in the time of the new council effectively. So, I think that that new council should then decide who the third other should be.
So, could I have a nomination for a voting delegate with the mayor and the deputy mayor? That's if council wants to go along that pathway. Have I got a second, I've heard councillor McAndrews.
Yeah.
It was that Darren?
Darren, yeah.
Can somebody give me a nomination then for the third delegate?
I think that, sorry Mayor, if the others, I just think we should wait until the elections are done and dusted.
No, we've got to, we need a delegate to vote for the first two.
Oh, okay.
I'm happy, my hand up.
Yeah, Deanna's happy, I'm happy with that.
Councillor Goodwin? That was councillor Goodsell, I'm sorry. Any other nominations?
I'm happy to go. I don't need to be a voting delegate, but yeah, if Deanna wants an opportunity, I'm happy for her to have it. I've been numerous times and contributed numerous times. So, if councillor Goodsell, sorry, not Deanna, I apologise, wishes to go, then she has my blessing.
At this particular one, it will be virtual.
Yeah, look, I'm more than happy to have support councillor Goodsell. I mean, as I said, she hasn't had the opportunity before and it will be virtual. So, that's quite difficult in a sense, especially for me who works, you know, full time. So, I'm happy for that.
Then councillors, those in favour?
Aye.
And councillor Statham and Lesley, if you could.
Yeah, I'll go to the chairman.
Thank you. And for the second point, we're going to leave that until for the new council to get, quite happy with that?
Yeah, I think that's, I'm sorry for it.
Okay, so the recommendation is, as with councillor Goodsell as a voting delegate. Draft 92.11, draft estate development.
Happy to second.
Happy to second.
Was that moved councillor Ring, was it?
Yes.
And then councillor Goodwin, second councillor Goodwin. Councillors, you'll have to bear with me, sometimes you may yell out and I may not hear it. So, we'll have to just go the best we can, okay? So, it's not easy with the virtual meeting. So, I've moved councillor Ring, councillor Ring, do you want to speak to this?
Look, I've only got one question for you, Mayor Thompson, to Mr Muir. And that relates to a paragraph under the planning comments on page 10 of 39. In the absence of defined or development goals identified by either the land data or current strong market demand, it's difficult to further develop built form. That paragraph, is that of any concern or is it just in the ideal world, it would be nice to know?
Mr Muir?
I just want my, I'm just checking this paragraph. I think, well, there's probably two issues. One is in terms of the final development form for the pottery estate, we have been seeking a, you know, a very specific response in terms of a development control plan. And what we don't want to have is a development control plan that simply defers everything through the development assessment process. I think though, having said that, that in the negotiations and that we have had with the consultants, bearing in mind, we need to go to public exhibition and this has been a very, very quick process to get it to this stage, of course. We need to get it out there and also have some further consideration. We were very positive that we were going down the right track to get the type of document which would take us to that goal. So, there's probably not anything of major concern, but we'd still like the opportunity to work through the draft document with the consultants if there are any issues that come up in the exhibition. But in answer to the question, there are no major concerns, no.
Thank you for that, Mr Muir. I've looked at the documentation that you sent out as attachments. I do note that there's some significant areas of contamination and some large areas of archaeological potential that will obviously have significant impact on any future developments. Look, other than that, I'm happy with the report the staff have put out. I'm happy to see this moving forward and this document will slot into our development control plan. So, that's all I've really got to say. It's nice to see this up and I commend the staff for getting it to council in such a short period of time.
Councillor Goodwin?
Yeah, I acknowledge that what Steve said as well. It's a commendation to the staff getting this through that quickly. It's a long time coming, this development, and I think that it will only serve the town good for this happening. Just a quick question about, just number one on the recommendation, it goes up for 28 days. When will that go up? Is it going to go up this week or is it going up in a month's time or in two months' time?
No, it don't go up.
Certainly want to get it up, sorry, thank you, Mr Mayor. The goal is to get it up ASAP. Of course, this is all happening very quickly. If there was an issue that it couldn't get up this week, it would not be any later than next week, no.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak, thank you, Mayor Thompson.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I think this is a wonderful opportunity for Lithgow Pottery Estate. It's one of the large, large parcels of underdeveloped land close to Lithgow's town centre and local amenities. This has been an ongoing challenge, I guess, for staff and the proprietors of Sidon Right to Limited. However, I think the redevelopment is a significant opportunity for Lithgow to have residential precincts as well as new and creative new business use. I believe this is a great step forward for council, for the people that own this land and for our local government area. It shows that these people have faith to put a lot of money into this development and I congratulate them for that incentive.
Thank you. Any other commentary councillors? I shall put that then, those in favour?
Aye.
All right, thank you councillor Lesley. Yeah, everybody voted in favour. Was there anybody that voted negative? No, thank you. Unanimous vote. 92.12.
I'll move that way, thank you councillor Thompson.
Move councillor Statham.
Happy to second, Mayor Thompson.
Second, yeah.
Councillor Ring.
Okay. Councillor Statham.
Oh yes, this is fantastic news for the Palmersoke Royal Fire Service. You know, they've been wanting this now for some time and I think it's a very great partnership now with Lithgow City Council to purchase that small piece of land so that they can get their new fire shed up and continue the great work that they've been doing.
Thank you. Councillor Ring.
Through you, Mayor Thompson, to Mr Gurney, I've got a question about the funding for the purchase of this land on which the shed already exists. It talks about borrowing money from the land bank and then paying that back. However, when we go to the next item on Halloween, if we do decide to defer it and only expend $25,000 on the competitions, that allows $55,000 left. Why cannot part of that funding be used for this purchase?
Through you, Mr Mayor.
Yeah.
The loan through the land bank reserve and funding it from any savings in this financial year, it will be a capital purchase, whereas the Halloween funds are operational. So, it would be preferable to try to find a capital saving rather than use operational savings for that. But I will keep that in mind. Obviously, we should council approve Halloween not proceeding, there will be a budget saving there. It's simply really the accounting treatment of it because it's a capital land purchase. It's better to fund it from capital savings.
Okay, no, that's fine. I was just going to ask whether or not, if you did borrow it from the land bank, would it be repaid back from recurrent?
We wouldn't usually do that.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Yeah.
I'm happy with that, thanks Ross. Look, I've got nothing else to say. It's a shame the lease wasn't put into place years ago, but we've now got another asset on our books.
Yes. Councillor Coleman.
Yeah, thanks Mayor Thompson. Look, I want to refer to the report and it says that, you know, the council records indicate that a deal of agreement for lease between the landowners and the council was anticipated in 2000, but a signed copy has not been located and it's no lease registered on the title, like I acknowledge that. So, my questions are, what mechanisms have been put in place to avoid this in the future? That's one of my questions. My other question is, can we please confirm that we don't have any other buildings or assets that don't have clear ownership or lease agreements in place? The reason I ask these questions, Mayor Thompson, is I note that it will cost council $36,000 to $37,000, depending on legal costs, and that's fine. But we need to be mindful that we are borrowing $4 million and I wouldn't want to see this happen again. So, they're the reason for my questions.
So, through you, Mr Mayor, the second part of the question, which goes to will we trawl or search for other such examples, I'll take that on notice and come back by way of a memorandum to all councillors. As for the first part, what will prevent this going forward? Well, it's my commitment to the council, as it must be, that if council resolves to do something, that it will be done.
Thank you.
Okay, any other?
Yeah, just a question, I note $30,000 to $35,000. We've got to find it somewhere, we're all well aware of the financial situation we're in. Does anything, can anything be forthcoming from the RFS itself? Is there anything that they can contribute? Is that a possibility or not?
They only contribute, with my understanding is councillor McAndrew, that the RFS only supply the assets on the land itself. Council supplies the land, am I right in that, Mr General Manager?
Mr Mayor, I'll ask, Mr Muir looks like he's wanting to speak to that.
The simple answer is, it is entirely the council's responsibility and for the capital purchase, no, we couldn't expect to get any support from RFS, no. Get that.
So, Mr Mayor, to all the councillors, I heard that clearly, no, we wouldn't typically receive any funding from RFS.
Gotcha. Any other commentary councillors?
Just write a reply, thank you, Mayor Thompson. It's a very small price to pay, considering these are frontline workers who experienced that dreadful fire of 2019, 20, that Dark Corner Fire Brigade were out there in every way possible, day, night. And I think the least we can do is to purchase that small piece of land for them to continue their great work.
Thank you. I shall put that then, councillor, in favour?
Aye.
Thank you. Nobody against? No, I declare that carried unanimously, thank you. Lithgow Halloween?
Happy to move.
Happy to move.
Lead councillor McAndrew, seconded councillor Coleman. Councillor McAndrew.
Yes, thanks Mayor, it's, I noticed the second year in a row and it's disappointing. However, as everyone knows quite clearly, it's just, this pandemic is continuing. In fact, I would say we're in a worse position this year with pandemic than we were over 12 months ago. This is fairly serious stuff now and you just have to look at the numbers emanating out of Sydney and sadly starting to spread to regional rural New South Wales. This is highly, fairly highly spreading disease and easily ported. And it's, we have no choice but to cancel an event that has people coming together in public spaces.
Councillor Coleman?
Yes, I'd like to echo those comments that councillor McAndrew had said, this is disappointing. It was, it is a popular festival and I do support Lithgow Halloween. However, we do need to help our community connect as much as possible during these difficult times. I'm well and truly in support of the Lithgow Halloween Smartphone Film Competition and Lithgow Halloween Best Dress. It's a great way to engage our young people, which is what we really need to do. So, I'm all for the Lithgow Halloween Smartphone Film Competition and the Lithgow Halloween Best Dress and I hope that our young people run with it. I'd actually like to see the Lithgow Youth Council get involved and push this through as much as they could possibly do as well, it'd be great.
Thank you councillor Coleman. Any other commentary councillors? I shall put that then, write a reply councillor McAndrew.
No, nothing further.
Okay, I shall put that then councillor, those in favour?
Aye.
Aye. You clear that carried, if there's none against, you clear it carried unanimously. Water and wastewater report.
I'll move that.
Happy to second, I do have a question.
May it be councillor Goodsell?
No, councillor Statham.
All right councillor Statham, sorry.
Oh yes, I think Matthew Trapp, executive manager of water and wastewater, has done a superb work on this, you know, quite a lengthy report. It's encouraging to see some parts of the report are moving in a good way and other parts of the report, unfortunately, with still some of the issues with broken water mains. But I think it's a very comprehensive report and I'm very happy to move it.
I think. Just wondering if councillor Statham.
I don't know whether you've got the one there councillor Statham.
Ron.
Beg your pardon?
I think.
I can barely hear.
I think you've got the wrong, the wrong one. It's the water and wastewater report, Portland Sewage Treatment Plant.
Yeah, beg your pardon, I have, I can barely hear what's going on.
Yes. So, we're on 93.1, Portland Sewage Treatment Plant, pollution incident.
So, is that the?
I shall move next, I shall move. Move councillor McAndrew, have I got a second there?
Is that the Portland Sewage Treatment Plant?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm happy to move it, I do have a question, I know what report we're on.
Yeah, it's move councillor McAndrew, seconded councillor Coleman. Write out councillor McAndrew.
Yes, Mayor, I've read the report, it's quite clear and succinct. On the event itself was reported and we've been dealing with the EPA all the way through. The EPA considers that they've fully investigated the report and simply issued a caution. And on the report, page 17, this on balance a fair and appropriate conclusion to this matter. And I note that although Portland STP is our newest STP, that we're also looking at it and others in any other ways and looking at ways we can improve our operations in all of our STPs across our local government area.
Councillor Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor Thompson, yes. I acknowledge that we've received a caution, it could have been worse. I do have a question however, is it to Matthew, Mr Trapp? Is it possible to invest in a dam pond between the Portland Sewage Treatment Plant and the discharge point where it enters the creek? Is this a possibility? Would this help avoid this situation in the future?
Through you, Mr Mayor, we're currently investigating a couple of different options to be able to hold the water, similar to how we do at sea of Laramang and Lithgow Treatment Plants. We're also engaged as part of a licence variation to look at moving the discharge point to a creek that's flowing more regularly, such as the Willie War Creek instead of the Limestone Creek. So, there is a, there still is a body of work that we're undertaking and that is involved as part of it, so that we have some of that backstop. As I'm sure some of the councils have been out there, have seen the land that we have for Portland is not favourable to be able to install lagoons such as what we have at our other treatment plants. We are investigating other options to be able to have that backstop.
Thank you.
Mayor Thompson, I have a question if I could.
Please.
Mayor Thompson.
Yeah, councillor Ring.
Through you, Mayor Thompson, to Mr Trapp. Can you just advise us, this is, this incident occurred because of a de-watering, de-sludging process, but we are expending money on a new process to de-water and de-sludge our STPs. Could you just give us a very brief update on that, please?
Correct, yeah, so the project that we're undertaking at the Lithgow STP is a new belt press facility for our slug management. So, this facility is triple the size of the one that we currently have at Lithgow. We're envisaging through our operations that we'll be able to trip, to de-sludge the Lithgow Fire Solid three days a week and our other plants on the other two days, the Thursday, Friday or any other two days anyway. So, yeah, we are investing an considerable sum to be able to make sure we can do it internally.
And if I could, Mr Trapp, that will also come with significant savings on an annual basis, won't it?
Correct, yeah, we currently spend about $200,000 in our operational fund to be able to de-sludge and use contractors for that. Doing this project should reduce that by about $150,000 a year.
Thank you, Mr Trapp. Not all questions.
I'd like to speak please, Mayor Thompson.
Yes, councillor Statham.
Yes, I'm very pleased to read a review of councillors' practices across all the STP operations have already been, have already been commenced before the incident. Also, this review is being completed across all three STPs and identified operational changes will be implemented. The most important thing that I read here is the learnings from this incident will also be actioned. So, well done to Mr Trapp because it's good to go over and make sure that these actions can be taken into account to learn more about what has to happen.
Thank you.
Mr Mayor, Stephen Leslie, can I speak?
Yeah, go ahead, councillor Lesley.
I'm concerned about a number of issues on this matter. We do have an operations committee meeting regularly and it has a standing item, water and sewer infrastructure update. And yet this incident was, correct me if I'm wrong, was never reported to the operations committee meeting. I wonder why we have that particular standing item. We also, on the 26th of April, received a confidential report about this matter. And it was ruled confidential under section 10A2 subsection E, which was information that would, if disclosed, prejudice the maintenance of law. Now, that seems pretty weak and pathetic to me, that what law could possibly be prejudiced if this incident was dealt with in an open, transparent way? And does that ruling, now that we've, now that we've got to August and the final report on it, does that ruling still stand? And that confidential report from the 26th of April remain confidential? That's one question. I move to the middle of page 17, where it says financial implications. We've got budget approved, cost centre expended to date, future potential impact and they has NA against all of them. Now, does NA mean not available or not applicable? Could I get an answer to that one before I go on?
Not applicable, is my understanding of that councillor Lesley, but I'll get the general manager to.
Well, it's not applicable or there's no costs in themselves arising out of the official caution. Of course, as Mr Trapp acknowledged, we're already commission reviews, we're changing our practice, we're applying for purchasing new de-sludging equipment. So, there are costs, but those costs were already in the operational plan.
And will those, will those costs, I mean, obviously they're costs, I mean, there has to be, well, first to start, are there EPA costs? Are there expensive report costs? Were any consultants employed? Are there costs associated with the dot point two on the top of page 17, the second dot point? Council agreed to capture three pollution reduction programme studies on the licence. These programmes require council to complete work, which targets sludge management incident report robustness and discharge and monitoring arrangements. Will these, will these reports, will these costs ever be brought forward in an open and transparent manner? What possible maintenance of law do we have that doesn't, that needs to, that we need to maintain? I'm concerned about this because we have had a recent, you, Mayor Thompson, a still uncorrected statement from your Meryl Minnetts about the Willeroang Sewage Treatment Plant. Pla-, uh, incident, you know, the twelve thousand litres caustic soda spill, where you stated expenditure to date was nil. That's, that's not ever been corrected and, and here we have not applicable on a whole series of costs. So I think it, I think they need to be provided, I think they need to be upfront and I think that the, that the confidential item from, from April now needs to be fully released so that we can have confidence, so that the, you know, the pu- the public of, of Willeroang, Portland and, and, and Lithgoe can be confident that incidents arising from sewage treatment plants, you know, are fully, fully open so that people know exactly what's happening. I'm, I'm, I'm unhappy about that, I, I feel that, uh, there has to be future potential impact, not applicable, not applicable seems to be a totally inappropriate response, uh, under financial implications in this report.
General manager.
And Mr Mayor, I'll deal with those two issues, um, one after the other. Um, the, the, so the one about, um, not applicable or, um, for the record, no, no costs, um, in particular. Um, the investigation and the official portion does not motivate or require council to do anything. Over and above those things that we're already committed to, the path that we were going down. So we'd already committed to review the STPs before this incident, we're continuously reviewing our practices as we learn from an incident. We, we implement new practices, we're purchasing de-sludging equipment. But I, I need to be really clear to the council and, and the public, um, that we're already doing those things and we're not required or motivated to spend anything more and therefore it is my view, um, that the report is very accurate in that issue. As to the other matter of the reporting closed session of council, um, it is a temporal issue. At that point in time, council was involved in an investigation. We had rights, the council had rights on behalf of the community, as did the EPA. At the end of the day, uh, the EPA, uh, determined the matter and so at that point in time it would not be, uh, prudent to release council's position. We entered into good faith negotiations, we complied with every request of the EPA, the investigation ran its course and it has come out in this report into the full light of day and it's a most transparent disclosure of the matter. So, hard undoing the, the languageing and the men- and the communication with the council was right to be in closed session at the time and should not be released now.
Yeah.
Oh, Mr Mayor, I, I'd like to move an amendment.
Go ahead councillor Lefferton.
I'd like to move an amendment that the confidential report of the twenty sixth of April be released.
Have you got a second up? Your amendment, your amendment, because at the lack of a second, our councillor Lefferton filed.
Thank you.
Is there any more, uh, commentary on this matter, councillors? I shall put it then, uh, write a reply, sorry, write a reply councillor McCandless.
Yeah, look, just briefly write a reply, um, there, I'm, I'm not aware of the Willeroang issue and I, I looked at this report closely to make sure that we, we dealt with it appropriately. I'm quite comfortable and happy. The, the issue occurred on the tenth of November twenty twenty. We self-reported the matter the next day on the 12th of November and the EPA attended the site on the thirtieth of November. Um, council couldn't have been asked to do anything more than that and the EPA concluded in their investigation that, that they would simply put a, a caution and they list a number of reasons why and I'm only just cut, cut, touching on a number of those. Um, the incident was isolated and likely resulted in minimal environmental harm. Council have fully, fully and willingly cooperated with the EPA's investigation into the matter and from the start of the incident throughout the investigation, council was transparent with and met all of its obligations to the EPA and I won't repeat again that we'd already started to review all of our council practices across all of our STP operations.
Thank you councillor McCandless, shall put that councillor, say in favour?
Aye.
Those against?
Uh, no, I'm voting against.
Thank you councillor Leslie. You clear that carried except for, uh, and against councillor Leslie? Now we, now we move councillor Statham to the water and wastewater report, if you'd like to move it.
Yes, I'll move that way, thank you Mayor Thompson.
I'm happy to second, may I?
Thank you councillor McCandless. Councillor Statham?
I know, I did give a report.
Yes, you did.
Earlier on, um, I'm quite happy with that, thank you.
Do you, Mayor, and I, I, my, my second being, I've just got a couple of questions really, um, it, it's, it's a good report. Um, I note again that, um, on page twenty one of the report, Clarence Water Clarence Transfer System was shut down on nine February twenty twenty due to the level of dam and remains off, um, that sets the meter, we're, we're making enough for it from rainwater and the like that we don't need to, but the question I've got, and if my memory serves me correctly, some time ago when we spoke about this, was indicated to us, um, before Mr Trapp's time, was indicated to us from our people involved in the, in the water area, that turning it off and turning it back on was at a fair cost, I'm just wondering whether that's still, is that still the issue? If you recall, Mayor, I think you raised it as well.
Yeah, Mr Trapp, uh, the, the amount of money to re- to turn the Clarence Transfer System on was mentioned at one stage of somewhere in the vicinity of some fourteen thousand dollars. Can you verify that or is, is the setup at, uh, Clarence of how much it costs to turn that system on and all?
I'll have to take that one on notice, uh, Mayor, but I do believe it is around that number. Um, the cost of it is not one of the reasons why we turn it on or off.
No, I, I understand that, but I, we're definitely concerned, I just, uh, we just couldn't get over the, the fact that it was, you know, to get those pumps up and running costs fourteen thousand dollars, that was, uh, I think that was a crux of the matter. But, uh, you're taking on notice and if you can just come back with the, exactly what it does cost to get that up and running, it'd be appreciated.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other commentary councillors?
No.
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 Write a reply councillor Statham?
Oh, no, I just think we hopefully have, will have good rain during this, uh, next period of spring because the Oberon Dam is certainly not looking great at this stage, sixty five point three percent. So, no, happy with the report.
Thank you, I shall put that councillor, say in favour?
Aye.
Any against? No, none against, I declared that carried unanimous. Uh, we go to nine point four, policies and governance, ordinary meeting of councillors.
Move?
I'll, I'll be the second.
Who, who moved that one?
Me, cus- col- councillor Coleman.
I'll be the second.
Second councillor Goodwin, councillor Coleman.
Uh, I don't need to speak to this mayor, it's pretty clear, we need to just follow on where we've, where we are at the moment by ensuring that we have, uh, the last Monday of every month, which is working as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's Monday.
Yeah, miss, Mr Mayor, just looking at a few, there are, there are a couple on the twenty third of May, the twenty second of August and the twenty fourth of October, they don't fall on the last Monday of the month. Is there a reason why that is happening?
Good question.
It's been the fourth Monday.
It's the fourth Monday, not the last Monday.
Sorry, the fourth Monday, yeah.
Right, okay, I was under the understanding it was the last, sorry about that.
That's okay. Any other commentary councillors?
Yes, Mr Mayor, I have an amendment.
Go ahead.
I'd like to add a point three. Uh, councillor briefing sessions, as far as possible, uh, not be held in the twelve days immediately preceding a scheduled council meeting and that this change to take place immediately.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that.
No. Do I have that again, please?
That the councillor briefing sessions.
Information sessions.
As far as possible, not be held in the twelve days immediately preceding a scheduled council meeting. That this change takes place immediately.
Can councillor, uh, Leslie elaborate on that for me, please? I don't know why, I just.
Yes, happy to do that. The briefing sessions seem to be, be given a very high status above that of council meetings. For example, attendance at briefing sessions is recorded in the annual report, but attendance at council meetings is not. For the record, I'm the only council, never thought this to council meeting. Of course, they're held exactly one week before a council meeting, it's im- it's impossible for any information that may come, may, may arise at a, at a briefing session to be moved as a notice of motion at the following council meeting. Uh, I think that's, that's wrong, as it turns out. It seems to me that the whole point of councillor briefing sessions is designed to prevent councillors informing the public as opposed to getting information and available to the public. You know, the, the classic example, of course, is the infamous verbal report for the twelve thousand litres caustic soda that was given at a council briefing session, but of course wasn't able to be released. Uh, but the reason for this amendment is occasionally, just occasionally, that there is received at these briefing sessions, information that should be acted on and developed. However, the timing makes it impossible to put forward a notice of motion to the next council meeting. This amendment will correct that anomaly.
Yeah, I don't.
You've had the amendment, have I got a second up?
Yeah, councillor Coleman.
Yeah, councillor Coleman.
I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, I do, I'd like to speak against it, Mayor Thompson.
Go, go ahead councillor Goodwin.
Look, I just think it's, it's, um, the, the planning around meetings and committee meetings, council meetings and information sessions, it's working really well, I think, at the moment, I'm happy to keep it as it is. Um, the reason for a briefing session is to brief councillors, not, not to, um, you know, to give councillors an opportunity to put up a notice of motion, certainly that can happen at, at any length or breadth in the, in the communication or the, the information that comes out from, from, yeah, I'm happy to keep it as it is.
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor Thompson, I'd like to speak against it as well, if I may. I, I say no, as with councillor Goodall, I say no need to change at this point. If there's going to be a discussion or debate about changing any of these practices, let it occur with the new council. As for the timing, I actually find the structured nature of the meetings good, allows us to get more information about what's coming up, greater opportunity to delve into matters that will be at the next council meeting, that's useful. And it is nice to have a briefing session where we can talk off the record and be advised without having to go into closed council. There is no conspiracy in this council to withhold information or to not tell the truth, that I find offensive.
Look, I want to correct this at once, uh, because councillor Coleman was quite happy to have this as a point three, now I need a second up for an amendment.
Uh, uh. Well, that is the amendment, the point true, the amendment is.
Oh, I see, yeah, yeah.
Point three, and that's.
Yeah.
Look, um, look, Mayor, if I may, um, I see some merit in what's being proposed, um, if I understand what's being proposed, we currently have information session seven days before the, the, uh, the formal council meeting. Um, councillor Leslie's now saying we extend that to twelve, I'm ambivalent one way or the other. Um, bearing in mind, of course, the information session is not and will not and cannot be used as a decision-making meeting in any way, shape or form, the decisions are taken at formal, formal council, uh, meetings, not at information sessions and anyone that forms a view of an information session, um, should be very careful because that's exactly what they are. Um, but I don't, extending it by four days, uh, you know, I, I don't see that means that some councillors got a matter that, that they're concerned about as a result of, um, information, um, at that information session that they then, uh, wish to put forward a notice of motion, I, I, I can't see anything wrong with that, Mayor, I really don't, I can't see anything wrong with that. Yeah, I'm, I'm up for making sure that decisions we take, uh, are, are open to the public and those decisions are taken properly and appropriately in formal council meetings of the council. So, you know, I haven't got a great bill of a problem with it, that, that doesn't faze me.
Mr Mayor, I don't see the, the need to change it one little bit at all, where it's going quite well at the moment, I'm, I'm exactly on the same boat as, uh, councillor Goodall and councillor Ring, um, it's not broke, let's not fix it.
Yes, and, uh, my, my, uh, way of, uh, of, uh, looking at this personally, uh, uh, from my point of view, it's, Mayor, I think that, uh, the closer you get to a council meeting with a briefing session, uh, on some of the matters is, uh, you're better off because, um, uh, some of the times, uh, a briefing session, if you have it too early, you, you, uh, before, before the paper comes out, you, uh, don't get the necessary information that you might probably could use on the, uh, night of a council meeting, so that's just my feel on, on the twelve. Um, I shall put that then, I shall put the amendment, uh, with point three in it, uh, the recommend, um, councillor, councillor Leslie's amendment, uh, those in favour?
Aye.
Aye.
There's one, two. Those against?
Aye.
Aye.
I declare it lost. So we go back to the original motion?
We have a, uh, people, uh, for and against, so that I can hear from here.
Yes, or, uh, councillor, sorry, uh, councillor Leslie, I, I shouldn't because you can't see, um, those in favour of the amendment was yourself and councillor Coleman, those against was councillor Thompson, McCandless, Ring, Goodall, Goodwin and Statham. Okay, um, so I shall go back to the original motion, councillor Coleman, if, if there's no more discussion, councillor Coleman, write a reply.
No, I don't need a write a reply.
Okay, I shall put the motion then, those in favour?
Aye.
Against? You clear that carried unanimous? Uh, graph local procurement.
I'll be the main, Mayor Thompson.
Move, Mayor.
Leave councillor McCandless, second councillor Ring.
But I'm moving it with a change to recommendation one. Can't leave.
Is it, sorry, Mayor Thompson, I, I, Mayor Thompson, I'm sorry to interrupt, but my.
What happened?
She's frozen.
Section, oh. That was councillor Goodwin.
Just lagged, um, are we?
You're back now? Will that councillor Coleman?
Hello?
You're back councillor Goodwin?
I'm sorry, it's.
You all mean?
Councillor Coleman, if you can hear me, just turn your video on.
Sorry.
Can you hear now? Can you hear me councillor Coleman?
Ring over on the line.
We'll just pause for a minute, Mr Mayor, while we try and get councillor Coleman on your phone. You got a number there, can we?
If you're four, one six.
Like Cassandra, we've got a few on straight here, if you did sign at that end, um, maybe I'll put this one in the line.
Can you hear that Cassandra?
Yes, Mayor Thompson, my whole system's lagging, the webex is playing up.
Yeah, no, all good, thank you. Right, councillor, councillor McCandless.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, I, I moved, um, I moved, um, the recommendation with a change of point one.
Thank you, Mayor. I moved, um, I moved, um, the recommendation with a change of point one. Apparently, point one says council consider adopting a local procurement policy. I want to change it to council adopt a local procurement policy.
Brilliant.
Number two and number three remain the same. Mayor has gone out for, um, public draft, draft local procurement policy has gone out. There was one submission come back and it really only concerned the, um, the issue of, um, what a business was and how long it had operated to apply to the stern, turned as applies to be seen as a local business operating. So, um, that's been dealt with on, on the recommendation tree. I think, um, it's gone through the process. It's, um, um, all the, certainly recommendation two talked about the cost and other aspects of the policy and operation be monitored over the polling twelve month period. Any material cost increase or other matters of concern be reported to council. And of course, as I said before, number three um, makes more clear the issue of what is a local business and how long they should have been operating for to fall under the policy. So I'm happy to support it then.
Can you second, someone's seconded this already?
Yeah, I did, councillor Coleman.
I have an amendment then if someone's already seconded it, if the mayor and the seconder will accept it.
Well, I'd like to talk first, please, councillor Coleman. Uh, I'd like to amend the, uh, point three uh, to delete consider to, 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 if that reads council can amend the definition of a local supplier in the adopted policy.
I didn't hear that. Could you read that, please? Could you read that out, please, again?
Council amend the definition of a local supplier in the adopted policy two.
Uh, I, I accept that as a mover, Mayor. I should have picked that up. It's still in what I did with recommendation one.
Yeah, I, I have something else I'd like to add once you finish.
Yeah, look, I'm, I'm happy with it the way it stands. It's gone out to the public. Um, that's the only comment that's come back from the public. I think as it stands, it's a good document. That's all I've got to say, Mayor Thompson.
Councillor Coleman.
Is that me? Sorry, councillor. Yeah, just point three, I'd like to put up the amendment, council include the definition of a local supplier that a business that operates from a permanent business address within the boundaries of Lithgow City Council Government area at the end. I don't believe that there should be a twelve, uh, twelve month period. I think that needs to come out.
Um, we've already voted on that, sorry, I can't say. It's going to the public.
Yeah, it's, it's on, it's on for twelve months. It's, it's, it's what I voted on last.
Hey, I remember I understood a thing that she said.
Hello, not goodbye. Excuse me, Mayor Thompson, I don't have, um, I'm having trouble hearing for a start. And now, uh, a lot of things have gone off the screen. I can't even read the business paper.
You can't read the business?
I can't reconnect. I can't hear anybody and I can't understand what's being said.
Well, I can hear everybody now.
I think we were getting feedback there. I apologize for that. Councillor Statham, I think if you just stay on the phone, we're hearing you clearly. You'll just need to work through audio. And I don't think we'll get the feedback now councillor Coleman. Mr. Mayor, councillor Coleman wanted to make that point again.
If you could just, uh, go with your amendment again, councillor Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. Just point three, it says, you know, council amending the definition of a local supplier in adopted policy to a business that operates from a permanent business address within the boundaries of Lithgow City Council area. I agree with that, but I don't believe a business should have to be, should have a minimum period of twelve months before submitting a quotation. I believe that if we're saying we need jobs, we're saying we need businesses, why are we putting that condition in place that limits participation? I think that it just simply should say.
Mayor Thompson, I'm going to call a point of order on this. We've actually voted on this. We've gone to the public. It's not practically, Mayor Thompson. Did you remember on this question, Mayor Thompson?
Councillor Coleman, I've got a point of order against you. I'll listen to the point of order. Councillor Spring, your point of order?
The point of order is, we have voted on this policy to go out for twelve months as a council. It has gone out to public exhibition. The public have commented, the public have accepted this. The twelve months was there to avoid corruption and fly-by-night people setting up businesses in this community. It is there to protect not just only this community, but the council's funds.
Yeah.
Yes. So we're voting on tonight, not on amendments to the document.
Councillor Lesley?
Yeah, yes, I think actually the twelve months is too long, but I think there has to be something. If councillor Coleman would like to move amendments with, with a minimum period of, of three months, I'd be happy to second that.
Yeah, I'm happy with that. I think that, you know, we.
Yeah, Thompson, you could be real on the point of order, please.
We need jobs and we're often saying we need businesses. Why are we putting conditions in place that limits participation?
Look, we, we have voted on this, councillor McAndrew.
Well, if I may, I was the mover. Um, I want to make the point again that we, not only have we voted on it, but there's only been one submission coming. And now those submissions have questioned the period of time to be deemed the local supplier. So on that basis, my view is if that was to change, then it'd have to go out for a further twenty-eight day submission. Because that position has not been raised in the one submission that we've received. So that says to me, that says to me that, um, the majority of our people out there are quite happy with it. The only issue, as I said, was brought up is, um, what, what designates local, a local provider. The issue of how local supplier or provider, the issue of how long that should be was not raised anywhere that I can see in the reporter in his submission.
I'd like to ask the general manager his comment, his thoughts about this, uh, this point of order. Do we, do we have to abide by what goes out to, to the public and not have any, any authority as a council to, to consider these issues on their merits? I mean, we've, certainly we've taken the notice of comments from outside, but they've been, uh, minimal. Therefore, I, I think it's perfectly reasonable that the council themselves can consider the matter. But I'd like to hear the general manager's position on whether, whether we are forced to, to take a position that's now in the paper simply because it has gone out for, for the twenty-eight days.
But we voted for this document, councillor Lesley. We voted for this document to go out as is and, and look for submissions. We, that should have been debated on the night.
I mean.
Just, just to give you many.
She sent it out to the, for the public. Why, why do you come, why are you allowing, come back to council at all if, if you're not allowed to consider it all?
We sent it out, we sent it out.
Ask the general manager his position on this matter.
I will. I'll ask the general manager, but I'm just giving you my position. My, my position is that we voted on it to go out to the general public to get submissions from the general public and then come back to council. And, and then we look at the submissions and we vote on the submissions. Mr. General Manager.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, well firstly, it's the, um, mayor's determination on a point of order, but I comment that a councillor as an individual, councillor is not bound um, to, uh, just accept, um, the previous decision of the council they bring to the table tonight, their position. The council is deciding this matter tonight. Um, so I leave it for the mayor to decide the point of order. As I observe the discussion, a, a pathway forward, so the debate is still ahead, could, would be that those that take an alternative view as to the wording of point three and the term uh, could, would have the prerogative to move an amendment, of course, which could be considered by the council.
Okay, thank you, Mr. General Manager. Okay, so I've got an amendment, uh, put by councillor Coleman. Has she got a second?
I've seconded that.
Second, councillor Lesley. Councillor Coleman, now do you want to speak to this?
Yes, please. I'll go back to what I said before. We're often saying in the chamber that we need jobs. We're often saying we need businesses. Why put conditions in place that limit participation, participation? You know, the council's competitive and co-creation process could do with the legal and risk management implication. And with the ongoing pandemic continuing into twenty twenty-one, we need to ensure we don't limit trade and opportunity. That's why I think we need to look at, you know, that, that particular point, that the fact that we're limiting a minimum period of twelve months, I'm happy to accept three months. But we need to look at trade, we need to look at not limiting trade and not limiting opportunity.
You can't, 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 councillor, uh, councillor Lesley seconded it. Is it, is it on? Councillor Lesley?
I think that the, uh, three months is, is ideal. It, um, it enables somebody to, to get a start in, in Lithgow. They're not a fly-by-night if they're living there for three months. And should they, uh, get the benefit of, uh, the procurement policy, then it helps them maintain their business and, and helps them with, with the potential to keep a business within the local government area.
And you, councillor Lesley, councillor McAndrew?
Yeah, Mayor, um, I speak against the, the amendment. Um, the, there's nothing in this policy that precludes anyone from tendering or applying for a tender of a job with, with council. The, the intention of the procurement policy was to give some weight to local providers and suppliers. Um, and for that, then one has to determine who is and who isn't a local, um, provider or supplier. I, I have no problem at all for a minimum period of twelve months, uh, before submitting. I was probably worded wrong. There's no, there's no refusal that they can submit a quotation or a tender to anyone at any given time. But I think to fall under the local procurement policy, I think it's fair and reasonable that that person or that group or that business or that organisation should have been operating within our, um, our community and for a minimum period of twelve months. Uh, I don't see an issue with that. And I make the point again, yes, we, um, reports come back after going out to, um, under some submission, but I make the point again, only one submission came in that queried the local procurement policy and it was specific about the definition of a local provider. Not anything about how long that local provider should or should not have been operating within our community. I, I think it's fair and reasonable and I think as well as, um, point two of my original motion, um, that there will be a review after a twelve month period if there's an issue and there's seems that the issue of the, um, twelve months or otherwise, well, that can certainly be raised by council at that time.
Uh, may I speak, please, Mayor Thompson?
Councillor, councillor Statham?
Yes, I have put a lot of thought into this because I've had a home-based business for probably forty, fifty years, actually. You know, I think the main thing here is that council has recognised that it's very important to support any home-based business or business. Now, the submissions have gone out. We voted on it on the twenty-second of July, I think it was from memory, uh, and that we only have one person that has come back with, uh, you know, another idea. I think that idea is great to include these people in home-based businesses and businesses with only one staff person. But to include the clarity of the local supplier definition, it could be amended to what has been suggested, and that is to have twelve months. Now, twelve months is not a very long time, but very important tenders to be considered. And not only that, if somebody hasn't been working in our local government area at all and they come here to choose this area to live, we need to make sure that their work is of the standard that council uh, will accept and they then will build a reputation and be able to work cohesively with council. We don't want to be not giving these people a chance. I think it's very important that new people to the area or people that have lived here for a long time that don't employ very many staff, to give those people an opportunity. But only one submission tells me we're heading in the right direction.
And you, councillor Statham, any other?
Yeah, Mayor Thompson, if I could. Look, it's like to echo the points made by councillor McAndrew on the fact that when we discussed this originally, I moved for twelve months. This is about ICAC and about, uh, preventing potential corruption or the perception of corruption. This, as councillor McAndrew said, this does not prevent any business tendering. What it does prevent is a business being given a financial benefit that hasn't been here for at least twelve months. Any business has got to rely on a council contract to survive within the first twelve months. They're not going to survive here. I'd question it. I believe twelve months is fair. It gives all our operators a fair, um, playing, a level playing field and it removes any risk of this council being sent to ICAC. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think, I think originally we copied this from double regional council. We thought it was quite a good idea. Uh, any other speakers on the amendment before I put it? Okay then, I shall put the amendment. Those in favour of the amendment?
Aye.
No, 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 no.
Those against?
Against.
So I declare the amendment, uh, defeated. So now.
Uh, again, Mr. Mayor, if you could.
Uh, sorry, sorry, councillor Lesley. Councillor Coleman and Lesley for the amendment. Uh, councillor Ring, Goodwin, Goodsell, McAndrew and Johnson against.
And Statham.
And Statham, sorry. I shall now go back to the original motion. Is there any other speakers to the original motion before I ask, uh, councillor McAndrew for a response to it? Here councillor McAndrew for a response to reply?
Nothing further.
I shall put the motion then. Those in favour?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against? None against. Declare that carried unanimous. Now, council committee reports. Environmental advisory committee meeting?
That'll be the move.
Now councillor Ring? Second councillor. Goodwin?
Second.
Councillor Ring?
No, straightforward, nothing to discuss.
They're signed, nothing discussed.
Any commentary councillors? I shall put that then. Those in favour?
Aye.
Any against? Declare that carried unanimous. Uh, finance committee many, meeting minutes?
That'll be the move.
Now councillor Ring?
I'll be the second there.
Second councillor McAndrew. Any commentary councillors?
No, Mayor, it's a straightforward report.
Okay, Mayor, it's straightforward. Thank you. I shall put that then. Those in favour?
Aye.
Any against? Where that carried unanimous. Our youth advisory committee meeting minutes?
Two.
Councillor Coleman, was it? Statham, sorry.
I'll be the second.
Councillor Ring, councillor Statham?
No, I see, um, just the minutes have come through. I've read them. I think everything is going well to that committee.
Thank you. Councillor Ring?
No commentary, speaks for itself.
Any commentary councillors? I shall put that, those in favour?
Aye.
Any against? Carried unanimous. Women's advisory committee may, minutes?
I'll move, councillor Coleman.
Councillor Coleman? Take him out. Take him in, councillor Goodwin. Any commentary, councillor Coleman?
Uh, not at this stage, Mayor. I think the minutes speak for itself. The women's advisory committee is doing its best moving, meeting during this time and they're doing the best work that they can in, under difficult circumstances.
Thank you. Councillor Goodwin?
Nothing from me.
Any commentary councillors? I shall put that then. Those in favour?
Aye.
Is there any against? Thank you, already carried unanimous. Minutes of talk committee, many minutes?
Yeah, I'll move that way.
That way.
Councillor Goodwin and councillor Statham? Councillor Goodwin?
No, there was a lot said about the Merengaro, um, the Merengaro Bridge, um, but it looks like it's all been sorted out. I'm happy to, uh, happy to adopt those.
Councillor Statham?
I think it's great news for a loading zone to be installed in Tank Street, Lithgow. This has been an ongoing problem now for some time. And I think the proprietors of Peas's Furniture One will be very grateful if council do vote on that tonight. I also see there's been quite a few, uh, other items taken care of with the Gophlings Road.
I also see there's been quite a few, uh, other items taken care of with the Gofflings Road and, uh, some stop signs, and yes, I think that's good news, progressive.
Thank you. Any other commentary councillor?
Mayor, I, I have a question that's invited.
Yeah, councillor Coleman?
It says, um, in relation to the Merengaro Bridge, it's point one, and of course, in the recommendation, it's, um, point two, I'm, I'm a little bit confused. It's talking about installation of the stop sign on Gofflings Road and the giveaway sign on Giroween Drive. Stop and giveaway sign needs to be swapped. An intersection design proposed would be accepted by council, so currently, it's a giveaway sign on Giroween Drive, and it's a stop sign on Goffling Road. So what's the intention to just swap that around completely? For how long? If, if I'm reading it right, that's a bit confusing.
Can you throw any light on that, councillor Goodwin?
Yeah, it was in relation to heavy vehicles, I believe, um, with the, the, um, adoption of the, the, maybe the new, um, subdivision going in up there as well. Uh, so they, in, in consultation with the police and with, um, RMS, uh, they looked at swapping those two around to allow, um, heavy vehicles, uh, better access. Um, that, that was my understanding of that.
Well, if you, if you're my mayor, it would be.
I, I might be able to shed a little bit of light on this. Yeah, and I'd, I'd ask Jonathan here, he probably took more notes than I did.
So, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, I can confirm that there, uh, the, the applicant's plans that were produced at the talc committee were incorrect. There is no change to the status quo for signage, and the minutes just reflect that the applicant's plans must be changed. So in short, the status quo remains.
Okay.
And, well, the minutes will have to reflect that, um, Mr. Edgcombe, that's certainly not what council has asked for the vote on.
So the mi, the minutes say that the installation of a stop, of a stop sign on Gofflings Road and a giveaway sign on Girow, giveaway drive, uh, Giroween Drive, sorry, be swapped, and the intersection designs for the proposed new bridge be accepted by council. So essentially, what the minutes are trying to do is suggest that the, the, the plans, uh, that the detail of the plans themselves with respect to the stop sign and the giveaway sign should be swapped.
But can I get it clear again, currently, it's giveaway on Giroween Drive?
Yes.
And stop on Gofflings Road?
That's right.
Are they going to change, are they going to be changed, well?
No. So the, 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 what the, but the, the recommendation to the council is that the applicant must swap the detail on their designs to reflect the status quo.
Well, does that mean two ones removed?
No.
The installa, I'll read it out again, the installation of the stop sign on Goldslink Road and a giveaway sign on Giroween Drive, stop and giveaway sign needs to be swapped?
Yes.
That, that's in their report, not in our report.
So, yes, so the detail in the plans be swapped, because the plan stuffed it up and got it the wrong way around.
Yeah, I'm good. Yeah, Mayor, I, I'm going to move an amendment in relation to, um, item two, that the status quo remains. Remove item two and the status quo remains.
In relation to two?
In relation, in relation to two. In relation to two, we're only talking about the sign, it's not the other.
But councillor McAndrew, can I just, um?
Sorry, two A, sorry, sorry, that, that, um, two A be removed and the status quo, uh, remain in relation to the intersection um, of Giroween Drive and Gofflings Road.
So, when it, when it reads, um, two, that we accept the engineering plans provided by the, uh, provided for the intersection, um, that's just in number two, but it goes down to number two A. If we accept those plans, we accept that the plans that we're accepting, that they have accident, or not accident, they've swapped those signs around. So if we accept two, but not two A, we'd have to get rid of two altogether, because we're not accepting those plans that they've put in.
Yes, that's, so councillor Goodwin's correct, if we do not accept point A, the plans will remain as they are, and the giveaway sign and the stop sign must be swapped.
Yeah, it's, it's coming back to me now, uh.
All, all I'm saying is poorly written, all I need to know is that the signs will remain as they are.
Exactly.
That's all I need to know.
Exactly.
The size will remain the same. It, it's just coming back to me now what we, uh, spoke about at the meeting.
So, so have we, have we admitted that?
So, uh, leave it all the same, because we're extending the engineer's plans, but wanted A.
Merengaro.
Signs, conditional upon the signs remaining the same.
Yes.
That fixes, conditional upon the signs remaining the same.
Now, the so, on their plans, if you, if, it's, it's hard to explain, but if we accept number two, the engineering plans provided for the intersection, that's what we're accepting, but we need to accept that A, they swap their plans around. So, th- they're swapping, what, on their plans, they've had the intersections swapped. Now we want to swap back to the original way they were. That's how it's reading in, that's how it's reading in our recommendation. It's a, it's a bit hard to get your head around, but that's how it is.
I, I think these minutes need to be voted on at the next council meeting.
No, no, we can, we can, in the draft, we'll reflect the council's wish in the minutes. We understand, we agree. Yeah. We'll reflect it in the draft minutes at the same time as the next day. I don't care if there's a thousand engineering plans, the Giroween Drive.
Yes.
And Gofflings Road stop sign remain the same.
Yep.
Yes. If, that's how it's reading in the recommendation now. But.
It's, it's just, it's just not written properly, that's all. Yeah. Okay. We understand the council wishes. I shall put that, then, those in favour? Sorry, councillor Coleman, go ahead.
I sent a query to Mr. Edgcombe in regards to an issue at the Vale of Clwyd. He did respond saying that it would be going on the next available talc agenda, which is, which is the next meeting, which is scheduled for September. My question is to Mr. Edgcombe, through you and Mayor, do we know what date that meeting is scheduled for?
Yeah.
We do, councillor Coleman. Uh, it is scheduled for the, uh, uh, the sec, sorry, no, um. It doesn't seem to have a date set for September, but the last one was the fifth of August, so it should be the first Thursday of the month, which should be the second, I believe.
Thank you, I just wanted to follow that up, Mr. Edgcombe, I've had residence.
Sorry, no, um, my staff have confirmed they're quick off the mark, it's the ninth of September.
Ninth of September, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Goodwin, write a reply?
No, no, just as long as we've got that, uh, sorted out, happy with that.
Okay, thank you. I shall put that, then, those in favour?
Aye.
Is there any against? Where that carried unanimous? Uh, finance committee meeting the ninth of August?
Happy to move.
Happy to move.
Now councillor McAndrew, second councillor Ring. Councillor McAndrew?
There's no, no issue, Mayor, it's been, um, the finance position has been reported, um, in for night of, um, on a number of occasions, um, both at the finance committee meeting and, or at information session, and, and at these council meetings, so it's pretty well known.
Any, uh, councillor Ring?
No, nothing to add.
Councillors, any, uh, commentary? I'll put that, then, those in favour?
Aye.
If there's none against, I declare it carried unanimous. Our sports advisory committee meeting minutes?
I'll move that way.
Move the move.
Good, Thompson.
Now councillor Statham, two second. Councillor Ring? Councillor Statham?
I know, the commentary explains exactly what's going on in that committee, thank you.
Uh, councillor Ring?
The hardest meeting I've had as chair in five years. Went for so long, it just totally stressed me.
Okay, any, no commentary councillors? Right, I shall put that, those, is there any against? Be carried carried unanimous. We go to business of great urgency?
Yeah, Mayor, I have, uh, two matters, um.
Councillor McAndrew?
Look, and I, I touched on this earlier, um, in another report, the COVID issues impacting, um, New South Wales, and more specifically, from our view, our local government area, um. As I said, we're seeing now that we're in a worse position, potentially, than we were back when COVID started, this new strain, as everyone keeps telling me, has, um, a, a higher rate of infection and people catching it. I'm concerned that, as a councillor, and more specifically, Mayor, you as the mayor, that we seem to be finding out after everyone else. I don't expect, you know, I'm not overly concerned about figures in Sydney and Melbourne and, and elsewhere. Um, I'm concerned about any, any issues that impact on our local government area. I'm now finding out that, I'm probably reading it in the media or on Facebook before either you, Mayor, um, or councillors, uh, know anything about it. So I'm extremely concerned, uh, about that, um. If it's good enough for New South Wales Health to put it on a webpage, or to distribute it to the media, and it's good enough that you should be advised of those matters at the same time, so you're prepared and able to pass that information on, on to councillors. Uh, in matters and times like this, people look to their council and certainly to their mayor. And I looked at the news tonight on some of the areas, and every mayor spoke, spoke about, um, the, the air, the impacts, the issues affecting their local government area. I just don't think the, um, the communications is, is good enough. Um, I know there's been this trying to make sure we only have one source, but that source has let us down abysmally. And we need to know and understand, so we're to impart to our, uh, residents and rate players issues that are impacting on the local government area of Lithgow City Council. If you're deemed it urgent, Mayor, I'd like to move something along those lines.
Yeah, no, I do deem it urgent, it's, it's urgent right away up there, state and country's the land, and so, well, main.
Mayor, I'm simply saying that, uh, new, that New South Health, New South Wales Health, be advised, I think they're the body, I don't know at times, um, be advised to, uh, when sending out media releases, orders or reports impacting our local government area, whether it be on, um, transmission rates or infection rates or injection rates or testing rates, the, any, any media that goes out in releases, orders or reports, you be advised at the same time, so we're not getting it second hand. That's simply what I'm saying, we've got to, the communication's got to be better, and it's got to come through the people that elected, uh, by this community to represent this community, and you lead that group of nine as the mayor. Um, that's what, that's what I'm, I'm putting forward, I hope I can get a second up.
I'm happy to second that, councillor McAndrew.
And I'm not trying, but I know it's difficult times, I know that, that the pressure on everyone, but equally, um, when it hits here, and at least us, the mayor and the councillors, must be in a position to be able to talk to our residents and rate players, like, you know, I saw the, the, uh, thing on Facebook, I'm not on Facebook, my, my wife is, saw it on Facebook, and I was, you know, getting her to report, well, it's misleading, it's wrong, then I find out it, two days later that it wasn't wrong, it was right. But we weren't advised of it, so it really concerns me, and we need, it needs to be fixed up.
Yeah, yeah, I, I fully agree, councillor Ring, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, I'd like to speak to it, Mayor Thompson, I raised this, this with yourself, councillor McAndrew, your general manager and Mr. Edgcombe on Sunday, when there was a Facebook post put up about, um, COVID cases, or COVID positive cases in Coles, it had me concerned, it was not on Coles letterhead. Um, there's a lot of anxiety, not just in our community, but in all communities with this, particularly in the regional New South Wales. As a council, we need to be on the forefront of informing our community what's going on and what we're doing. We've offered support and assistance to a number of charities and not, not, uh, NGOs. The community needs to know we're doing this, the community needs to know why tips are closed. We need to get it out there, and there, as the, the leader, I think you need to be taking a, 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 uh, put your best foot forward if you want, and getting that information out as our leader to the community to try and allay, allay any fears or anxiety. We don't need people going to the shops and panic buying, there's plenty of food, God knows, there's plenty of toilet paper. Um, we just need people to remain calm and do the right thing, and that needs to come from our council. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Ring. Look, I fully support exactly, uh, what basically you have put forward, and, uh, I, I acknowledge the effort, and, and don't get me wrong when I say this, I acknowledge the effort of our general manager and, and our directors, uh, in trying to get to the, uh, in trying to get to the forefront of this, so I know that the GM, uh, and, and Mr. Edgcombe are working tirelessly, uh, to try and make sure that we get the right information and get it through the, uh, uh, the information. And I thought it was a great, uh, a great letter that the general manager put out this afternoon, and, and, and all terms, because, uh, we are, I don't know how we've missed it, but up until now, uh, Lithgow has been very, very lucky to only have the number of cases that we have in the district. But I've got to say that, uh, now that it's started, you only have to see what happened at, uh, Bathurst, and, uh, through one misappropriated, uh, person being allowed out of the jail, we've got, uh, sixty or seventy cases in, in Dubbo and, uh, Warrington and different places in the West. So you only got to have, you only got to see what happened in Lithgow last weekend, when, when a a couple of David footballers and, and so forth come through and, uh, you know, gave the wrong information and so forth. So it's only a matter of time, and, uh, we, as I say, we've been lucky, but we're starting to get a couple of cases now, and, uh, we've got to be very, very careful and, and try and get the right information out to our community, and as quickly as possible, because soon as somebody gets it on Facebook, you know what it's like, it's, uh, it runs rampant, so. Um, I will get, uh, the general manager also to, uh, just elaborate a little bit on what I've said.
Can I just comment before you do?
Yes, uh, well, main.
Just wondering, um, councillor Mcand, McAndrew, is this specific just to Lithgow local government area?
No, just our local government area, councillor Goodsell, just our local government area, not ju, not just Lithgow, our local government area and whatever that area covers.
So how can, how can we be seen to, to get favouritism for our local government area when there's a whole of, of the state as well?
Well, they seem to be doing it pretty well in, uh, Sydney and in, uh, Western Sydney, and, uh, I saw the news tonight with Parks, Dubbo, Forbes, uh, Orange, Mudgee, they seem to be doing it, um, and getting the information through. Very little was said on, on, on Lithgow, but the issue is to make sure, all I'm simply saying is, is that when something comes out from New South Wales Health, that input that is applicable to our local government area, the mayor be advised.
I think Mr. Edgcombe's, uh, in daily, daily, uh, conferences, um, as the limo, or the lawyer con in our area, um, with consultation with the GM, and I'm sure that every single time that happens, he reports straight back to the mayor and the GM.
That's where, that's where my, that should be going.
I, I want to make a claim, I, I want to make a claim, there's no, there's no, um, um, position by me, um, attacking our own, uh, general manager and staff, they're doing everything right.
Yeah, I, I think they really.
It's the information that they're receiving that's far too late, and that, and that information they're receiving is going out in the public before they're even getting.
Yeah, totally agree with you councillor McAndrew on that, just thinking of the top on the staff.
I've been de, I've been denying, uh, uh, some of the statements that I've, that I've heard, you know, from, from our community that had been put on Facebook saying, no, that's not right, and then I find 24 hours later that it is right. You know, that's the, uh, that's the issue. Mr. General Manager, I'd just like to get your, uh, opinion.
Oh, it's a difficult issue to summarise, but, um, we absolutely agree, um, that the safety or comfort that we had even a week ago isn't there today, and we recognise the need for fast, clear and truthful, uh, communication with the community. Um, we're working and engaging with New South Wales Health, and indeed Michael McGrath and other people that manage our Twitter and Facebook and websites, I'm working with them to ensure that we are joined into any communication as, uh, quickly as possible. So I can only agree, um, we're not going to be able to get ahead of social media, but we need to get consistent, clear messaging to. But we need to get consistent, clear messaging to the council and to the community as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, just so I reiterate, there's no criticism on my har- on my behalf in relation to our own staff and, uh, dealing with this, I know I've been reading all the emails, um, the GM, um, keeps me up to speed as well as the mayor. But the issue is, it's not just, um, they're not getting the information appropriately and quick enough as far as I'm concerned. And that's got to change, we've got to know, so we're at least on the front foot and dealing with it and speaking to our community before they're finding it out to other sources.
Can I get a, a motion read out again?
That the.
Yep.
That the request to New South Wales Health when releasing information relating to the Lithgow LGA regarding COVID-19, that the mayor is notified at the same time, um, being declared business operator.
Yep.
I'd like to speak against it.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Lethrie?
It's, uh, this pandemic has been going now for eighteen months. This current, uh, episode's been going for at least four weeks. Uh, today, we got, uh, number one of the newsletter telling us about what was happening. I really think it's hardly what you'd call it, been treated, it may well have been worked hard, uh, in the background. But as far as communication, uh, to councillors and to community, I think it's, it's hardly been any. Uh, and now we, yeah, we're sort of having decided that the New South Wales Department of Health, yeah, needs to be go responding to, go to the mayor of Lithgow Council. I think it's all very, um, bit late, bit limited, I think it's, it's all out of the, out of the box and I believe that you're just panicking about the fact that you've been look, you know, you've been made to look a bit stupid. I think it's just a, a poor attempt to try and cast the blame somewhere else, it's, it's, it's not, as far as I'm concerned, it's, uh, the fault is not with Department of Health, it's, the fault is with the communication that's been coming out of, of Lithgow Council. And if you haven't been getting information, then the fault is that you haven't been seeking it. I'll vote against it.
Thanks councillor Lesley. Write a reply councillor Andrew, do you want to?
Yeah, look, um, I'm a little lost with the contribution made by councillor Lesley, I thought he would, uh, support this whole heartedly based on what he's just said. I'll make my points clear again, um, on the ground, the mayor, the general manager, our staff involved, been doing the best job they can do. Ensourcing and imparting that information to us when they get it. The problem is, they're not getting the information quick enough, they're getting it too late and by the time they pass it on to the mayor and councillor, it's already known. Far as I'm concerned, that's not good enough, that's not the proper way that things should be, be undertaken. Um, it's all about communication, that communication starts and stops at the, um, the health, New South Wales Health, that's what I'm told, they're the body. They're still in all the, um, all the reporting, all the media releases, all of the figures and policies and statements and decisions. All I'm simply saying, when they relate to the local government of Lithgow, then, uh, we be advised before we find out second hand from someone else.
Uh, Mayor Thompson, may I speak please? Uh, I think it's mayor.
Sorry, sorry councillor, that was a right reply to that, so.
All right, all right, no worries.
Yeah, so I'm going to put that, councillor, uh, those in favour of the patient? Those against?
Against.
Thank you councillor Lesley. I guess that everybody else was for.
Yes.
Mayor, the other matter, it's not ur- well, it's, it's not urgent, but I think it needed, needs to be reported, um, because it only occurred on, on Friday and, um, I don't know about other councillors, but I've been queried, I just want to report publicly, uh, on the record tonight that the shutdown that was to occur at Mount Piper has now been shelved. If it was the appropriate, safe and right decision to be made, um, that shutdown would have included four hundred to four hundred and fifty contractors coming into our area for, coming into our area for three months. And, um, I understand that some of those contractors would have been coming from, from, uh, hotspot areas in Newcastle and Wollongong. And I thank Energy Australia for not going ahead with that and, uh, postponing it until next year. And I want to thank the general manager, um, for chasing up a lot of that work and his, uh, correspondence, uh, to and from uh, Energy Australia, helping that decision being made. In the current situation we find ourselves in, there was no way that that, uh, that shutdown should have proceeded.
Yeah, no, very, uh, very important data that I probably, uh, can't forget. Uh, any other general business? That being the case, I shall declare the meeting closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.